Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. All members are present. And we'll start with the approval of minutes. Kind of a motion for approval of the minutes. Thank you. Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And then, item D, new in previous matters. Item one, our communication from the city administrator transmitting the 2018 capital improvement program for consideration and inclusion in the 2018 City of West Dallas budget. Ms. Grill and Ms. Stino, either one of ya, have at it.
Um, I'll just start and let Peggy take over. She, um, worked very diligently to put another memo together for the committee which should be before you tonight, to cover some of the things that came up at the last couple of meetings. I believe she will be going through some of those and we can discuss those as we move forward. I also had placed in front of you an email that I had, or a document I had received via email from other person probes regarding the National Avenue Plan and the importance of that. I don't know if it's necessary for me to, to read that, but I did provide each one of you a copy of that.
Okay. So, maybe if we can just go through the memo, we'll go one by one. And, and we could have very easily have just given you a verbal on this, but I thought it would be nice if you had something with you, um, after this while you're contemplating the budget and the CIP. So, the first item that we would, we had discussed was the street lighting fund, um, funding options for that. We have two projects in the 2018 CIP. One of them is $200,000 to begin, um, the replacement of our streetlights outside of street projects. Something that's estimated to be about a $38 million project over time. 200,000 is, is just something for us to get started with that knowing, um, the condition that our streetlights are in as well as, you know, the obsolescence of the technology, et cetera. And then there was another $84,000 project in for replacement of, um, street, uh, alley lights, switching those over to LED. That was a little bit more straightforward. That was definitely an efficiency project. Um, but that got us to talking at, um, the last couple of meetings on October 9th and 17th about what were some of our options. Um, we did search high low. We only found one community in the state that does street lighting. Uh, we had previously thought the City of Milwaukee did do a street lighting charge. They do not. And they have told us they have never done one. So, City of Rice Lake is the only one, um, that does one. They've done it since 2006. Well, they're a smaller community, but they also have an electric utility, which makes their situation a little different from ours as well because the utility then owns all of the poles and the wiring and the circuits and things like that. So, on their utility bills, it was a charge for power as well as a maintenance fee for, um, the upkeep of the poles and circuits and wiring. Um, they collect about $190,000 a year, um, from their street lighting utility. Um, it, it's not something that's cut on, um, but the attachment one, I just kind of walked through you through some of the research that we had done and what we had found out. Certainly, there's nothing that prohibits us as a city from creating a street lighting, um, utility or a special revenue fund, whichever, um, the preference would be. As you go through the, the document, you know, when I got to the list of pros and cons, certainly, it would give us an additional revenue source. Um, we wouldn't have to buy, do any borrowing, which, um, would save us some interest costs. Potentially could get a little bit larger, uh, customer base because tax exempt entities are included in that. But when I got to the cons and I, I started thinking about, um, back in 1994 here, or 1996 here, as well as I did in a couple of other cities, just creating a stormwater utility. Um, there's a lot of administrative costs that go along with it. And it's not just a one-time cost. It's an ongoing one. So, you could probably look at that first item and say, that's probably what makes it prohibitive right now for us to do it just solely to, um, divert it from the tax roll or from borrowing, I guess, is, is more the purpose that we were talking about. In addition to that, you know, there's a list of six or seven other items there, um, that you can certainly read through at your convenience. And we'll make sure this entire document gets online as well in the budget file. But, um, at this point, it's staff's recommendation to forego the creation of any kind of separate, separate street lighting charge, um, just based on, um, the cost it would take. And it, and it would be a permanent thing. It wouldn't be something we would want to create one year and use in some years and not in others. So, staff is actually recommending against that at this point. So, I don't know if there's any questions on that piece?
I'm glad we did the homework. Thank you. We being you. Thank you.
There were other people involved. Rebecca was involved. Pete was involved. It wasn't just me. Um, so, the next question we had, um, at one of the meetings was, okay, how much in the two, you know, we had talked about this idea of the capital improvement program expanding and, um, not just to keep all of the city's needs in one document so that the city can prioritize and do different things. Well, in our 2018 budget, as there has been in a number of, um, other years budget, annual budgets, um, some of the departments, um, do a reserve or a set aside for a future purchase. And the question that we had received was, how much is in the 2018 budget for those purposes? And there's approximately 369,000. Attachment two does show you a list of all of those on page five. Um, I guess, you know, one of the tasks in the next item we'll be talking about is, um, how do we fund our 2018 CIP needs? Um, if indeed the whole project, the whole project list is going to be done. And I think this is one of the things that we could put this $368,000 towards our 2018 CIP as long as we have a full understanding that the projects that the funds were being reserved for would then go into the plan and in their due time and due priority get funded through that program. So, there is, like I said, there's a list on page five of that. Then the next item we had talked about just before we get into the funding of the CIP was, we were alerted just after the budget was released for the general transportation aids from the DOT that we're going to get approximately, um, $235,000 more than we had in the past. As of right now, we do believe that's the new standard. Um, however, that's certainly up to future state budgets. But, the recommendation we were going to make, and I think we even alluded to that we were going to make, was to potentially reduce our fund balance applied in the budget process. However, I think with the needs of the CIP at this point, we'll hold that recommendation for another year or another, um, set of funds available and recommend that we put that 235,000 towards the, um, 2018 CIP. So, then the next item, I'm about in the middle of page two, would be the 2018 funding of the CIP. So, there is, I, I tried to boil it down to a shortlist as well as show you it in the entire plan. But if you look on page six, I just used the top section to set the stage of, this is what the CIP looked like the last time we were together. We had other bonding in the amount of about 1.8 million. And then we had no funding source identified for projects totaling about 752,000. We also had our street bonding was listed at 2.876 million, which was 126,000 over our, um, charter ordinance allowed 2.75 million, which was a total of about 2.7 million. Um, if you look at the changes that, um, we're suggesting or recommending, um, we can get that other bonding, assuming all projects in the 2018 CIP are going to be done, down to about 475,000. All of the items listed, um, it, it's not a dollar-for-dollar match, but basically, I was trying to identify funds that would, um, be used for what purpose. Now, could we call, instead of using carryover for something, could we use it for something else? Certainly. I'm not sure that those semantics matter a real lot as far as this goes. Um, but there were, you know, as far as the recommendations being made, the carryover, um, the 723. I'll, I'll tell you right now, that's a conservative estimate, but not having a lot of really good history on what happens at the end of the year and what kind of charges need to still happen and things like that. I needed to be a little bit conservative on that because the last thing I wanted to do was promise you that we'd have funds available and then come February or March, tell you that that would not be the case. We do have some capital accumulation funds reserved that we think we can also use for a number of items. The third item is a suggestion. Um, there's been a lot of discussion on what do we do as far as street lighting? Do we have done as part of our streets projects or do we use our staff to do it? I, I, i.e. with outside contractors or do we have our staff do it? The next recommendation has to do directly with that. The 17,000, the fourth item is just a savings amount that we found as we were reviewing the budget. The next one, those are those general transportation aids. Um, we did have, engineering had about 118,000 in a sidewalk program that they were unable to spend this year. And they didn't really have it in their plans for 2018, so that's on the list. The next item was just, um, one that was listed in the CIP as not being funded as well as in the budget. So, that was a credit. And then some reserve monies, about 600,000 of reserve monies that we're suggesting. So, it, I think this is probably, again, I, I'll be the first one to admit, a little bit conservative, but I think this would be a pretty responsible and prudent financial plan for the 2018 CIP. And then the next six pages are, I know you're getting tired of seeing it, but another rendition of the plan. Um, the funding sources are, um, expanded to match the sheet that we just went through. And then the light peach highlighting is showing all of the line items that had changed since the last time we were together, just so you could see how those change, those funds were moving around.
Any questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman May.
When would we have to make a decision on that 475?
Um, well, I think, uh, staff would like to present the 2018 CIP for approval at the same time as the budget, which would be November 21st. Um, until the money is borrowed, it's not really done. So, if you're saying, could we wait till see how year end goes? Could you approve the projects committing to the borrowing, hoping that we don't have to borrow down the road? That would work. But, once, once the approval to commit to the funds, we, we just need to know if it's a clear approval or if it's a conditional approval, um, so that we can decide how to proceed with, you know, like if, if it happens, you know, whatever the projects are, some of them have a lot of lead time and different things like that. So, staff would just need to be real clear on what is being approved and when.
And then I got a question for Pete.
Sure.
If you want to come up. We have no microphones in the back. So, Pete, last week, you and I were talking, and one thing I had noticed was construction management for the project, a National Avenue. Not streetscaped was about 53,000. With streetscaping was about 136,000. Difference of approximately $83,000. And you and I had chatted how $1,200 light pole and a $4,500 light pole shouldn't really have any more construction management over it. And when we had discussed it, you had mentioned that that streetscaping number was really just a percentage of the total project. So, in reality, do we really need that full 136?
Well, that is, that is, that's the, the number that WISDA is going to use. I guess, we will pay what we pay. I, we will pay what, what the consultants charge. But that is the estimate that WISDA goes by. We, we also talked a lot of these things, like the bricks have a higher construction management because they are more time consuming. The, uh, the furniture would be more time consuming. The, um, it's just an estimate. We can't hang our hopes on that number, I guess.
And then, we were also talking, and Peggy and I chatted about it today, that it seems like a lot of the discussion on the National Avenue Plan has been like it's a roadway plan. And it's not a roadway plan. The National Avenue Plan is an economic development plan. And Alderman Weigle and I had a conversation last week about it too, that we can put this, all the streetscaping in that we want, but if there's not going to be follow-up on behalf of the city to actually get the development moving along that corridor, this is wasted money. And so, I, I would hope there would be a commitment within the district or by the city, or both, to actually then move forward with some sort of economic development, working with businesses and things to, to make things happen. So, I had talked to Alderman Weigle. It sounds like that's something that the older persons of the district are committed to, which is good, best you can.
Well, and if I, could just, sure.
Alderman Weigle.
I think when you look at the plan, if you read it, that's actually what it says. It outlines the things that we should be doing about helping property owners with facade improvements and encouraging the right, you know, kinds of uses. Um, and, I mean, that's all in the plan too. The, the corridor plan is not just a construction document. I mean, I think, and if we, we already adopted it, but if we just set it on a shelf somewhere and never come back to it other than when we build this grade, then I think we're doing the citizens a disservice. I think we, yeah, we do need to, to, to make this a living document. Now, some of the things, you know, will need some adjustments and all that, but obviously, but, you know, I, I think right now with interest rates as low as they are, and if we're only talking about, say, only $475,000, you know, that's what we're talking about now, right? You know, if that gets us, you know, the bioswales are out. The, the solid green bike lane painting is out.
Mostly.
Most of it. The furniture's in. The trees are in. You know, um, I mean, those are the things that we would never come back. But trees, trees have to stay regardless, you know, so, but, uh, as far as I'm concerned. But, uh, I think if we're this close to it, you know, and, so, these aren't, these numbers that we see, construction management, that's not a maximum?
Until we have bids, until we have a contract, there's a lot that has to happen. So, we're going to bid. And we're gonna, uh, this project's going to be inspected by a company, Community Engineering and Building.
Never heard of them.
Uh, actually, I've heard of the owner. I actually worked with them in Waukesha. So, they'll be under contracts. There's a lot that has to happen. I don't, they'll, they'll sign a contract. I don't know what their contract will actually be, whether it'll be 135 or 52, but that gets negotiated between WISDA and the consultant that's going to inspect. So, this is just an estimate at this time, just a guess. Uh, they, they use 15% to assume.
Just kind of a flat 15, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've spoken before about the importance of National Avenue, especially with all the development happening to the east, you know? And, and this is, uh, it's actually three years of construction coming on National Avenue. And I hope that we can do the rest of the street well also, you know? But again, I brought it up, the library, fire department, fire administration, health department, senior center, they're all there now, you know? Um, and then if you just go half block over to the east, at 70th, obviously, we have Veterans Park, you know? And then as you go further east, we run into the Six Points, you know, Farmer's Market area. I think it's real important that this stretch looks good. But, like Alderman May said, that document comes with a lot of other recommendations and that we'll have to carry forward in the next one, two, five, 10 years.
And our development department has told me that they certainly plan to do that, carry on with the economic development.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they already have been. There's been facade improvement grants in the corridor and there's been.
Working with a promotion of business that's looking to buy a building on that, um, feature in National, right in that cross-section where there's Walleye Salon and et cetera. He's actually owns a business in Wataosa and wants to expand his business here. Um, that's a, that PT place that wasn't being considered for a pinor home. Um, we've looked at a prospect for Jack Bradley Slim, and maybe there's other prospects that will come along. Establish a number of programs to help fund those, those things using half mile tip radiuses and fire funding and community developer block grant funding is great a way to help, um, do a couple of those properties there. And the spaces are getting built, so. It'll, it'll take a little bit more aggressive as we go into this. But as construction's coming, you don't want it open and you're closed because of construction. So, um, it's a delicate balance, so.
Mr. Steeble?
I think Alderman Weigle is right. It, it's got to be one to just landscaping, streetscaping. But economic development is more than just jobs, more than tax-based creation. Get the tools to make all that happen. Uh, every major company, we had to do lots of architectural improvements, uh, landscaping improvements to change the character, the quality of that particular neighborhood from Milwaukee Side Company on 70th Street to, uh, Yellow Freight, uh, to the, the Mandel Projects. All of those are being high quality that we're asking the president to do. In the public realm, we need to also do those same types of things to be able to create the environment that, uh, economic development industries want to be located in. Uh, particularly National Avenue, I think, as Alderman Weigle mentioned. People think that's hard downtown with all those public buildings in there. And that's a good place to be able to do that. We want to take other parts of that public realm and move it up into 92nd Street and, uh, National Avenue, put some kind of a, uh, a kiosk in there. Two, I take it out, 92nd and 93rd Street, National Avenue South Side, taking all those buildings out and putting a new, uh, we'll be developing next week about, you know, a major project there. The whole corridor is going to evolve. Uh, and the city and the public realm has to be part of that evolution to help create the image and the excitement and the, the constant image views that people drive up and down. That's why, uh, streetscaping is so important to get. Some good calls, streetscaping, that's what people remember. It's not like, uh, if you give your, your wife a, a, a fire station for Christmas, it's useful and.
Oh, she'll remember that.
Everything's mysterious.
Fire station.
It's mouth. You need something that you remember, that, that brings them, evolves their heart and so they remember these kinds of things. That's why landscaping, streetscaping is so important as part of, of economic development tool.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. What are you getting your wife for Christmas?
Not another fire thing. Also, on this, on this 70th and 76th Street, we're pretty far along the path on right-of-way acquisition where we've been buying one, two, four, five feet off of some of these properties. And that was all based on the streetscaping plan that, that was presented.
Right. So, a lot was put in play, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't want to do this on the next, the segment from 76 to 82nd. I kind of need to know now because we're going to start buying real estate for that section too, so. I mean, these, these things have to be done years in advance.
And then, when, so, 76 to 82nd is next year?
No, it's a few years off. So, from 92nd to 95th is in 2019. 76 to 82nd is 2020. And then I did apply for more funding, actually do National all the way to Highway 100, but that's another. That could be in the future.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Shbusky.
And where are you, where are you getting all that money to buy these properties?
That's in the budget. That's in the budget. It was in the budget, last year's budget, this year's budget.
And so, from, going from 76 to 82nd is in this year's budget?
The, the, some of the design, yes. Yeah, I had a little bit, like 150,000 to do design and real estate.
Purchase.
It, I budgeted over four years, so I think I had like 100,000 for four years to do that stuff. Because that stuff's not cheap either.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigle. So, are we, just need to give direction on this 475 on how we're gonna, we're gonna bond for it if needed? But if, if another, or should we just, we just want to say we're gonna bond for it and be done with it? Because I'd be comfortable with that, especially with, you've heard me say this before, historically low interest rates. I, I think we're, you know, we may be looking back, five years from now, we may be looking back at 2017 and saying, boy, we were getting money for less than 4%. Remember the good old days? You know, because I've lived through 21% interest rates on a, on a land contract property and, and that can be a tough time, so. That, because those, that really adds to your costs when the interest rates go up. And these are all 10-year notes? Is that correct?
We typically do 10-year, which is really favorable. We, we could do 20, but as long as we're on the path for 10 and we're able to support it, stick with that.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman May. Peggy, nice job.
Yeah.
From 2.6 million. Down to 475, and it's basically for, uh, fire vehicles. And there was something in there for petting, petting bike, about approximately 25,000 of that, so. Much more comfortable. Um, I prefer to see what happens at year end before we just say, go do it. But, um, way better. Thank you.
Well, if we have extra money at year end, we can roll it over for the next.
For next year's, yeah, we're going to need it again.
It's not, budget's not going to get any better, I don't think, you know?
Yeah, and I guess I'm following up on Alderman Weigle's question as, and I'm looking to staff. What, what do you need from us as a committee right now? I, I mean, I would be happy to go ahead and, and as Alderman Weigle said again, now, let's bond for the 475. We, we can do that. Is that the sense from staff, from the consensus from the committee?
We don't need, um, well, we certainly want to answer all of your questions so that you can make a decision on November 21st, but we don't need a decision today as far as what's going to exactly happen. We're just making an attempt right now to answer as many questions as we can to take those out of the mix before the contemplation of approval.
If you don't make the recommendation tonight, you'll have to make it either at the recess meeting on the 7th or the 21st for the council, so.
Be willing to entertain a motion tonight. In fact, if, if folks are comfortable.
Well, I'll move for, for bonding for the 475, just so it's done. That way, as other issues come up, at least this side of it is settled. So, I'll move for that.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second from Alderman Road. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman May.
My understanding is we don't have our final numbers in from the state yet?
We do not have our numbers from the state. We're hoping for them again, and that was one of the next things in the memo. Um, we were supposed to have them two weeks ago. Two weeks ago Thursday, the first round came out, if you will. And in the first round, ours wasn't in there because they had a manufacturing, uh, issue with one of our properties. So, but they promised us, they got that all taken care of. The next Thursday, it was going to be out. This past Thursday, now they have a manufacturing personal property that the state assesses that they got, they had, what they just told us was a mix-up. And they're promising us now the numbers for this Thursday. Once we get the numbers, it's a very quick calculation, but we don't have them in hand yet, so yes, that's true.
Would it be, uh, safe for Mr. Chair just to hold on to it? I mean, I, we can't approve the bonding here tonight anyway. It'd be approving the plan. And it's going to go with the budget. If, if it'd be all right, just hold it till the 21st or everything else? I think we're all in general consensus about the 475 though?
Well, I think we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second, right. Certainly, yeah, what you're saying, Alderman May, I think is, makes sense too. That's fine. But we got to vote on that motion in a second unless the person that brought the motion and the secondary withdraws that, so.
And if the, if the person keeps on the table, it might end up coming back again. It's just a procedural thing.
Because we're not, no action will be taken on it. I, I'd prefer that we keep the motion there. And like I said, so we can at least have this part of it, which might be the biggest bone of contention in the budget. I mean, there's going to be some other things to sort out yet too. But I think I'd rather just get it settled tonight.
Any further discussion?
Alderman Hayes.
Alderman Vitale. It's Hoss, not Hayes.
I do agree with, I, I, really, I mean, why holding it? I mean, until the 21st. To me, I mean, it's, I mean, what are we doing here? I mean, I don't like to play games, really. I don't like to play games. Let's vote on it. Realistically, really. I mean, come on, I've been around a while, you know, that's. Let's get things done. I just, just, I'm sorry, Alderman May, but it won't make no difference, really.
Yeah, Alderman Hoss. Yeah, I, I don't think there's any game playing. I just wanted to, I just want, I'm talking, I'm talking. I'm talking. I just wanted to see what the final number was before we approved it. I think we're all in general consensus. If that's the way the committee goes tonight, I'm fine with it. I'm just saying it might be good to wait till the final numbers, but there are procedures to get it back here if we need to, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Then, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. All right, go ahead, Rebecca.
Just a question. Did you, um, want to have these items again, just at one of the, at both of the future recess meetings? Did you want to schedule another meeting before one of the other council meetings? Perhaps on the 21st in case there's some differing numbers or wait until we know?
Let's wait until we find out what those numbers are, if there are differing numbers. I think we, and, and again, I'm looking to the rest of the committee here too, I think, to, let, let's hold off on.
We could wait, we could wait a week or two to figure out what's going on, and we'll know by the, for the 21st.
All right. What else do we have to cover? That was our, uh, CIP part. Now, we're talking about the budget in general. Moving on to item two of our agenda. And, uh, again, Ms. Grill, Ms. Stino, whatever.
This item is on the agenda in case there were any questions or discussion that you wanted to have in addition to the ones you have already had before the committee. Not sure if there's any questions that you have to bring to us at this point or changes, clarifications.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman May. I'm not sure if this would be the appropriate venue, but if it's not, let me know. There are three TID funds where we've got money available for homeowners to do improvements to their.
There are three TID funds where we've got money available for homeowners to do improvements to their properties, and Patrick, you and I had talked about this. It doesn't seem they're getting much use, at least two of the three aren't getting much use, and I'm wondering, should we become a little more lax in some of our, our guidelines, right? Now, there's income limitations and things like that on that.
No, there are no income limitations on the TID programs.
On the loans?
We still underwrite them.
Go ahead, go ahead.
They're still underwritten.
Yeah, and actually, it's a good point. Patrick, why don't you come on up to the table, because this might be a little bit more of a discussion, so we can get you recorded. Thank you.
You know, I went and looked at those, those funds, they are being utilized, and we have been doing loans to people to fix up their properties. It's a deferred interest loan program we have, where it's two and a half percent interest, but there's no payments for the first two years of the loan, and we give them fifteen years. We still underwrite it like a, a typical loan, showing that they can pay loan the value, creditworthiness, all debt ratio. I mean, we've, we've become very creative with those, those terms, and we do look at ones, and if they're ones that are, need a little extra underwriting or extra approval, we bring them to the CDA for approval. And we've been, and the CDA's been open to those discussions on fixing up properties. If we have someone that does not meet the income requirements, we refer them to our federal programs that we have available, if they meet those income requirements. Some of those programs, some of the TIFs there, the Summit Place, one that we've been utilizing, that's TIF number seven. Yeah, TIF number eleven and I think it's fourteen have not been utilized as fully because we're waiting for development to kind of take off. We funded them, but we were, we haven't been really aggressively promoting them as maybe we should. But we're waiting for the Ogden development to take place on Eighty-fourth and Greenfield, and Sixty-eighth and Mitchell is a seven-and-a-half acre site that we're promoting for development, and there's something, some things in the works there. And we fund those, but without something coming, it's hard to want to rush to get those, some of those funds up. We have done some things with the Sixty-eighth and Mitchell. If you remember, Westallian received a facade improvement on the building, we did use the half-mile of the TIF, and we are working on another one, maybe DOP's Tavern, to be able to do a complete facade improvement on there, so it would improve the look from what's built across the street. So we're always looking at creative ways to do things in, in those areas. I like to see more of those funds on the street. Summit Place is TIF number seven, there's two hundred and fifty thousand there for economic development, and we were working with people for the former Crowd Addies, but now there's structural issues with that property. But there's another property that we might look to put those funds into in terms of a, a business that's looking for some financial assistance, so. It was there to help attract some catalytic type of project to the Six Points.
So basically what you're saying is you're just waiting for the big piece of the development that'll actually pay off the TID before we use these smaller?
Yes, we just kind of, you don't want to rush it all on the street and then pay interest on that, and you want to wait till you get something to start paying that off.
And do we know an Eighty-fourth and Greenfield's going to redevelop? That was supposed to be in October, I thought, this year.
Right. It's going to be probably starting here by December, or we're just waiting for the HUD approval on the financing, and they should be good to go.
Okay. So maybe we'll see some of this get used a little bit, okay. Mr. Chair. Alderman Weigle.
Patrick, on the, on the streamlining, you know, I'm a small business owner, a property owner, and sometimes you look at those things and they're, now, do all, do these, these TIF or TID-related loans, they require prevailing wage, the Davis Bacon requirement, is that in there?
No, it's not.
No, okay, but the federal projects would be still.
Correct.
Okay, so that would actually make that in some, in some cases even more, more attractive than some of the other proj.
Right, it's more attractive than using community development block grant funds. However, I still require them to get two bids. We still kind of underwrite it for procurement purposes, and, and we still require a contract, still requires common council approval, and most of all, fiscally responsible, is it going to happen? Is, are the costs in line, do, do they have money to put in towards the project?
I was just looking at things that maybe could make, make it more, more, like I said, streamlined to get more people.
We can always, we can always look, we can always look to do that, right?
Yeah, that was in the plan, too, the street, you know, about sometimes people know going to City Hall can be kind of a cumbersome arrangement.
True. I mean, but it's also, they're using public's money.
Oh, no, we should be careful with public's money.
And we should be reviewing, like, if council recently approved a facade, a grant or commercial improvement for Parthenon Foods, that'll come out of TIF number eleven, and there's a monument sign and landscaping, and we asked for the two bids, we asked for all that, and it just takes time to get those bids, and it requires a contract, and I had the city attorney review the contract and making sure that everything is in place before, and they have to perform before they get the payment. That might be the biggest hurdle, is the fact that we are reimbursement.
Reimbursements.
Because people have to come up with the cash first.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. All right. Anyone else? We don't have to vote on a budget yet, I don't think we do.
I know we don't want to do that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's right first.
All right. Any other matters regarding the budget that are on our agenda? Anyone wants to bring forward, anyone wants to discuss? All right, then can I have a motion adjourned?
To move?
A motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adjourned. Thanks, everybody.